Good evening, welcome to our school board meeting. It's Monday, November 8th, 2020. It's six o'clock. We're in Susan Tyler Labs, the Boardroom, the 1887 Building. I'll have them do this order and ask Mr. Kelly to call.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Gaynor?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Ms. Stoltz?
Here.
Ms. Warpego?
Yeah.
We do have a quorum. We will continue. I've all noted tonight's meeting has been a list of states. Do we have any community participation other than what's on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll dispense with reading that and go to the middle school student presentation.
Brian McBurney, which was the middle school. I just want to introduce you first to a couple of people behind the scenes. Our Builders Club is presenting today, which is a new club this year. And I don't want to steal so much of their thunder, but as you know, the district has a longstanding partnership with the Kiwanis organization here in this in the city. And this is our club in connection with them at the middle school level. So we're very proud to get that get that started and continue working with them. The advisors to the club are Ms. Katie Spurley and Ms. Erica Card. They're not speaking, so I do want to make sure you know they know who they are and the work that they're doing. And also shout out to Ms. Brian, one of our associate principals who works directly with all of our student clubs and organizations and does a lot of work with them as well. So with that, I'll introduce you to our Builders Club Board. And they'll come and share the rest of the the presentation with you. Okay, so we have Emma and Lucy, Alexis and Parker. Okay, come on up.
Oh, sorry.
Just Jason, you're looking on the wrong side, I've been told. Don't open the presentation. There you go.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, that one. There you go.
Sorry, I've never opened a presentation.
I'm gonna blame it on daylight savings.
But we have this student. Parker, I like that.
All right. Who started us off? Excellent. Where's yours?
So we are the Elkhorn Area Middle School Builders Club. And thank you so much for having us tonight. We are really excited to share with you about what our club is about. Hello, I am Rover, senior president.
Hello, I'm Lucy Allen, I'm the vice president.
Hi, I'm Lexi Cosmo, I'm the secretary.
I'm Parker James, I'm the treasurer.
What is Builders Club? Builders Club is a way that leads to being involved with the Kiwanis Club as an adult and key club in high school. Six to eighth grade students can join. We help locally, nationally, and internationally with different projects every month. We also sit for our school district with different service projects. As we serve, we learn leadership skills as well as empathy and compassion for others.
So for income, we got $240 over the summer through one, so we call it a perp. We spent over $22 on computer production, $120 on our cranching. Right now, we have about negative dollars.
So at the beginning of the year, we all had a first meeting and we created a form where everyone could go on 12 service classes. And we liked to. And this is our first project. For our project, we collected all the media prints. And we sent them to the U.S. Department of Children's Hospital and put it in a box. The part that the club undertook was collecting and sorting the crayons into colored categories. The club also packaged and took the crayons off to the back. In total, our crayons that we donated made 2,205 new boxes.
Cool. Did you have to strip the paper off of each crayon?
That was part of the cranching. The second jump rope we did was making jump ropes for OCC Operation Christmas. Many community members and students donated old and unwanted t-shirts so we could do the service project. The steps, we cut the t-shirts into some sort of yarn, break the t-shirts, tie three strands together, and we tested them. We put them in our boxes for children and.
Current project, Operation Christmas Child. We are currently working on Operation Christmas Child. We are holding a collection drive to give items to children in other countries who may have never received a gift card or who cannot attend school at this time of the day. They have pencils and paper.
What's next? Builders Club wants to get more involved. We have 20 members ready to help. We also want to do a fundraiser for our service organizations as part of the Elkhorn Fund. We need the majority of our funds in doing great projects and we'd like to do a fundraiser. Any questions?
So you're pulling a drive for the Christmas. Can you explain that or what it entails? What's for the students in school, the parents getting involved? How does that work?
Right now, it's basically just at school level. We made some boxes, like some big boxes for donation for our school. And we put them in like all the pods around our school so that students can basically include items and donate them.
And then we also have this like handout sheet and a form providing parameters reflecting on personal care items, toys, school supplies, clothing, and life helps like.
So when do you make the jump ropes? Are you doing that in school or are you getting together after school?
Um, we have them meeting like every like two weeks. So when we come together in one meeting, we decided we were gonna make the jump ropes.
Did you shred the shirt all the way down to like threads or is it just kind of?
A strip we cut. So it was like a yarn. Yarn and wool. And then we.
Just tied it together?
Yeah.
They don't bite. He's he's gonna jump rope for you. He's gonna jump. He wants to hear it five o'clock.
I want to compliment the students and the advisors for having the Builders Club and having a key club. The service organizations from the communities are so important. And if you've been to Kiwanis meeting, the average age level is getting up there pretty high. I mean, you defeat the pipeline of future members of those service organizations, whether it be Lions, Rotary, Kiwanis, Optimus Club, there's lots of great service organizations. I hope that you carry this experience at school, going through high school, that as you become adults, that you also consider serving. Serving in those. Great way to get back. Excited to see that.
There you will also read this list of items here for you guys.
Awesome.
Do you guys want to be on the table?
Do you take just cash from the shoes? So you can bring your clothes?
It's fun to go shopping. That's why I was asking, I like to shop and I don't have kids anymore.
Are you guys aware that it that there's another level at the college level where you can get a ball? Circle K?
I'm super excited for you guys doing it at this state of the game. I was the president of my Circle K club in college and it was it was one of the best experiences I ever had. And it it actually influenced my career choice and career path and getting into nonprofit work. So being able to serve at this young age and learn how getting back to your community helps everybody.
Do you have anything about the jump ropes that you made them? I've been on the speeding side of Operation Christmas Child where I've been able to hand out the boxes in meetings and see the kids. They love the story behind it. And the fact that you made the jump rope, I think is so special that if you were able to include something about that, that some other students in Elkhorn, Wisconsin made that for them. You didn't just go to the store and buy it, but you actually made it out of t-shirts. I think that would be really meaningful. So just an idea, because I've seen the kids wanting to tell the stories behind the box opening. And that's kind of fun. But anything from like home cards or anything, pictures, it just kind of brings that extra level of meaning behind it. And you guys have so much time doing that, but maybe to add a little photo or something. That would be really, it'd be really special. It would mean a lot to them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your work.
Right? When I saw him come in, I was like, oh, yeah, yeah, right?
We have our minutes from last meeting, October 25th. Test your agenda. Questions?
I'll move to approve the minutes of the October 25th, 2021 regular session school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Okay.
So moved in second to approve the minutes of the October 25th, 2021 regular session school board meeting as presented. Roll call votes, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell? Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Warpego?
Yes.
Motion carried, general other fund bills, Mr. Truman.
General other fund bills this evening cover check number 144465 to 144609. Wire transfer number 915 through 926 and ACH check numbers 163 to 196. And the combined amount of $950,265.29. And then there's a number providing some additional information on several of the bills in the report.
Questions for Mr. Truman?
No, I just wish I had that in my checking account. It was that number just down. I have nothing to pay that kind of bill. Okay. No, I went through all of what.
I I do have one quick question. On the the wave system at the CCA or CMTA. Is, so my understanding that this, it says the original wave system was installed six years ago. So is this a replacement or is this?
No, we didn't have the system at that site. Because it's a gateway.
So this is new to Gateway, but the whole of the rest of it is six years old everywhere else.
Correct, must be updated. So there are some of the schools needed some additional buttons or we wanted to put some new ones in. The district office didn't have it. They put one on both floors.
Okay.
So I really give that a lot of credit going through and verifying where are we at. And then they contacted the original installer and came up.
And Matt is that?
Matt Trum.
Matt Trum.
Yeah, Trum, yeah. School resource officer.
Yeah, originally, there was a little reluctance from Gateway because they have their own security.
Okay.
System, but with Matt revisiting it. Yeah.
Okay.
Good to go.
So we have the wave that gave it additions.
Every segment. Also, one was placed so close as well.
The buttons, yeah.
Good idea.
And all of our buttons are behind a plastic container. Should be marked, you know, what they're used for, because we had one accidentally pushed by a. That was. Not gonna say that they're never, the wave system got activated in Kenosha by a prison. I, yeah. It happens.
Well, the fire line, kids have pulled those, so it's the same thing.
Natural drum. Other questions?
Looking at the expenditures, the chameleon communications is a partial payment for video ads at the movie theaters. I don't know, just looking at it, it's not that big of an amount. I mean, it's substantial, but not that great. But is that probably the best arena to do advertisement?
For the number of views, the cost per views is extremely reasonable. And that's one of the considerations that we looked at. So that's, yeah, we get a lot of bang for the pop on the number of views with that.
Other questions? Any other questions, Paul?
No.
And they're up for about approximately, I think that's for six months, Paul.
Okay.
For six more months, so and it's over 180,000 views. So yeah, when we look at it compared to social media and so forth, it does.
Okay, yeah, it just caught my attention. At movie theaters, how long does that actually go? And are the movie theaters open again? And what type of numbers are we really getting? It was just kind of my question, like, it's not that big expenditure, but it was like, well, how many people are going to movies? How long is the commitment? How are they using that all the shows or just some of the shows or, you know?
Yeah, that's the, what you're looking at is for the Imagine Theaters and the Burlington Theater and the Lake Geneva. Burlington owns the Lake Geneva one, Burlington. I believe it may also include the Whitewater Theater. And we're expanding to the New Berlin Marcus Theater.
So is it the the preview that they have all the things going in sequence? Is that part of that?
Yeah, so you can choose, they have an earlier sequence, which would obviously have less views. And then they have the sequence, which is right before the movie trailers.
Okay.
As well.
And that's what we're using?
I, for the New Berlin one, I'll have to double check. For the other theaters, it's the one right before the the movie trailer.
Before the main show?
The New Berlin prices went up quite a bit because you have more views, the more people come to that. But we felt that was a footprint area that we wanted to expand on for the option.
Do you have a a video clip of it or anything that we could look at? Or do I have to go to a movie? And which movie would you recommend?
Yeah, it's it's being developed. So this is for a redevelopment of a new one. You can see the Career College Academy video at Imagine, but we can get the, I think we shared the clip on social media or Facebook as well. It's a 30 second spot.
Okay.
But if you go, yeah, early to, I don't know, what movie is out right now?
I'm limited on that anyway. I can't really go, so.
Yeah, go to an early showing in the middle of the day, Paul, and you'll, there won't be anyone. We have terminals, yes. But yeah, there's definitely, they're getting, they're picking up because they held so many movies, you know, through COVID that you're getting a lot of cases of larger name movies.
Okay, thank you.
We actually, we probably had, and we do track, we survey students, where do they hear about us and so forth? And most is still word of mouth is probably the top one. But the using, you know, the social media platforms that we do, the the movie theater, it I think it's plants those seeds. It creates an awareness. And then also the other one that we heard, Kelly's received quite a bit of feedback on the billboard. That people have said, I was driving through town and saw the billboard and so we called. So our goal initially for the Career College Academy, because we had, Lake Geneva was our largest provider of students. I think they averaged around 45 here up the year. When they announced that they were pulling out, we really needed to backfill those number of students. And so we had to step up our advertising and marketing. And so we're very pleased that Career College Academy has its largest numbers that it's had and approximately half are open enrolled. So we were able to maintain that that ratio despite the schools pulling out. But we had to do the advertising to create the awareness of it. Because we don't have the school counselors and those consortiums going, you know, sharing the information about the school.
Right.
Right. We'll get that, the spots being developed though for the options.
If they had drawn footage happening last Wednesday.
And we felt that if we were going to put it in that larger theater, we needed a a quality looking, yeah, we didn't want, we want something reflective of the school in the program.
Other questions? Are you now looking for motion?
I move to approve the general other fund bills of November 8th, 2021. Check numbers 144465 to 144609. Wire numbers 915 to 926 and ACH check numbers 163 to 196 in the combined amount of $950,265.29 as presented.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Is the move in second to approve the general other fund bills of November 8th, 2021? Checks numbered 144465 to 144609. Wire numbers 915 to 926. ACH check numbers 163 to 196 in the combined amount of $950,265.29.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Warpego?
Yes.
Motion carried. Education for employment and academic career planning assessment.
Yeah, no, I did that.
I know, mine did too.
I know.
Must be my preview.
Who is that presentation?
Hey, each year, we are required now to present or share what our self-assessment is related to our academic and career planning. Elkhorn, I think we have a proud tradition of being one of the very first school districts in the state to put together the academic and career plan. We were part of the early grant recipients, I believe, just over 20 schools at the time where school districts have participated in that. So we really led the way in the academic and career planning. This document shares all the different components of that plan and what the current status is, who's responsible for working with and or facilitating it. It's pretty much just an overview of all those different components. So it's there for your viewing. If there's any questions, I need for that document.
Is this something new?
Yeah, so the academic and career plan isn't new. This collection of it and putting it into a format that you can just see all the components. That's in a part of state statute for a couple of years now, but we're required to approve upon this. It should kind of like, here's our curriculum. It's just one of those additional mandates. So in a sense, it's just collecting what we were.
Are you done?
I move to approve the education for employment and academic career planning assessment as presented.
Is there a second? So moved in second to approve the education for academic and career planning assessment as presented.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Warpego?
Yes.
Important discussion, I have a spin report.
Okay, so we'll start with the high school level. The big thing here is the FFA National Convention. It was so much fun and it was a great opportunity for all of us. The big bottom picture is that all the Elkhorn students who attended outside of Lucas Oil Stadium, where our general sessions were held. The top picture is the egg issue scene, which I had the chance to be part of. We received our plaque for being a national qualified team while we were at convention. We also had the chance to take a honey bee farm tour. In the middle picture, Maya and Riley are showing off their freshly bottled honey. In the bottom, you can see Mr. Tadlock, who is our queen bee during the tour.
It's a difficult job.
Yeah, so. Last picture, concert, we got to attend in the Gamebridge Fieldhouse, which is where the Pacers play. And not only was it cool to do all that FFA stuff, but it was really neat to travel and see the city of the deep. The Veterans Day Assembly will be held virtually this Thursday morning. Students will watch the pre-recorded assembly from their classrooms and the veterans will have the chance to dine in or carry out a meal. And Student Council hosted our annual Halloween night and it was great and all the kids had a lot of fun.
On the FFA convention, 55,108 students were present for the convention. And we went to the opening session, which Indianapolis time, it would have been, what was it, 7:30? So Wisconsin time, it's 6:30. And there was a massive dance party that looked like a Brett Young concert, but it was even bigger because it was in Lucas Oil Field.
I think Indianapolis would change your times.
They never change their times.
Right.
I don't know what if now we're the same.
Well, maybe we're, no.
I know, they don't change your time.
They were ahead of us like Eastern time.
Right, they were at the time.
Yeah.
So now they need two hours.
No, they just don't change.
Right.
They just don't change. They won't change.
But if we fell back, they'd be two hours ahead.
No, because we were in there like regular time. Now we're in regular time.
There is a different time than we are.
I wish they would just all leave at this one time and we get used to it.
Okay, so at the middle school, Mr. Fisher's class has learned about chemical changes by roasting mini marshmallows on tiny little candles. Mr. Ninfelt and Mr. Grotteck held their annual science, Halloween science show to teach students about vortex chambers. And the EPMSTTO is having a picture car wash fundraiser from today through the 30th. At Jackson, the third grade students built simple machines to propel the wheels away. One of the first grade classrooms held Flashlight Friday, which is where they turn all the lights off and get two flashlights to read. Oh, cool. And then another first grade class colored turkey. At Tibbetts, the pumpkin patch was really fun and they, it was a huge success. All the kids got to play games, go on a hayride and pick out a pumpkin to take home with them. And on Friday, students wore orange to withstand our anti-bullying. At Westside, Maddie kind of touched on this incentive program last meeting, but if students earn five gotchas, which is a time where a student is caught being good, they get to pick out a book. And this week, there were 84 students who got to pick out a book to take home. Students had fun in the leaves during recess and Westside had picture retakes on Friday. At Options, the 4K and kindergarten students dressed up as super readers of Miss Patty. Options Family Game Night will be Friday, November 11th from four to six, and they'll have board games, bingo, and yard games. And the pictures are from two weeks ago, but it might be farther along now, but the addition has started. And then at Career and College Academy, the youth build house installation process will begin this week. And last week, the youth building students worked on their academic career planning and scheduled job shadows in their careers adventures. That's all I have. Very good.
Director's report.
Tricia Spandy, Director of Operations and Online and Blended Learning. And I've invited Sarah Stone.
And I've invited Sarah Stone to be here tonight because she is a huge part of our six twelve program and couldn't do what we do at Options in the six twelve without her leadership. So I thought I'd bring her along and she can share some of the things that they have going on there. Another picture of Miss Patty's super readers, it was just the cutest thing ever. So it couldn't help but add another one in there. Our first goal this evening that I will share is in the category of responsiveness. And on the tails of receiving the mental health grant this year, we are creating a multi-tiered system of support for mental health. And that's in collaboration with our staff and a state level mental health coordinator and our mental health navigator, which is Chris Colasimo. So how will we do that? These are four action steps that we have planned and are working currently on this year. The awesome Mental Health Academy, the first session was in September, that was held virtually. After that, we met for the first Plan Do Study Act to review flow, to create a flow chart. And we reviewed different surveys to assess students and choose one to where they will be at. To how the flow chart will help them. So monthly meetings without a mental health coach and weekly PLC meetings to review the progress that we have on our PESACOS. Our second goal is unrelevance. So we are continuing to add and increase what we're doing for our middle school and high school students with them as they work their way towards graduation. So first is we're looking at college level courses. So we're going to Gateway, I have students at M A T C as well as Fox Valley Tech. There's one more. And they are taking technical college classes and I also have a handful of students who are at UW-Whitewater. So when I look at last year compared to this year, our technical college percentage of students is about the same. We have increased by five percent are students who are going to UW-Whitewater, which is awesome. We are currently working on some certificates for students. We did not have this last year, so we actually have two students who are working on a new apprenticeship. And five students who are working on the employability skills certificate through DPI. We're super excited about that, the students are excited about that. It's a pilot year, so I've asked them to be patient as we try to figure out the logs and make sure that we're doing everything that we need to do for that. We are also offering some additional pilot classes for elected credits. We read this here. First is stemming from the forestry grant that Juliet secured. And so she's doing forces of nature and students in that are looking at the option course and providing some insight into possibly doing an outdoor classroom as well as compost for that outdoor classroom as well. Second elective is the learning or personal growth and it's about self-activating pulling in some of the self and creativity as well. And our last one is standpoint tools certification, so students are working on those skills.
The precision measurement, is that fun? Share with them from your forestry grant in that class, they, what was it, they discovered?
That we have an endangered tree that's a sycamore, so we did a young land. And so Juliet is looking at another grant to help protect that sycamore tree. So I've already talked to the construction people, don't touch it. So we're excited about that too. Moving on, we are starting to look at competency based diploma for students who are at risk. I have been in contact with our president Apex and she's giving me some resources to review, looking at what DPI requires and just starting that process so that we can provide another pathway for students to get better. What I, what I like about the pilot courses that we're doing for electives this year is that they're offered onsite. That they can, the same courses can also be accessed virtually. So the last goal that we have is under relationships. And being part of a virtual school creates some challenges for families to feel the global bond with school because not all of our students attend in-person classes, but they still want to have that feeling of being part of a school. So it was a goal for us this year to create more opportunities. We have a really robust, you know, parent-led field trip opportunities, but not all families can access that. Not all families can access that because some field trips cost money and some are far away. So we really wanted to provide some activities at school that students and their families could take part in. We did a party at the park in September. We have game night and we're doing movie night in January. I love reading night in February. And April has an Earth Day and tying in with our forestry grant. We also have tried to increase our social media engagement for our remote families. You may, if you follow any of our accounts, you might see where have you worn your Options t-shirt? So all of our families get an Options t-shirt. So we, you know, we create challenges to share that. Spirit days, so even if you come in the building, you know, it's crazy hair day, crazy sack day. You know, share your pictures of your at-home learning with us, just to create opportunities for them to feel involved. The next one that we have going right now is being a super reader. So where you can share your pictures of being a super reader at your home. Our families request sometimes when they come in person for learning, you know, as our way to contact other families, they only see them once a week, so we create an op-in. Give us the share. Not every family feels comfortable sharing that information, so it's a choice if you want to be part of that directory. And the, the last one with increasing parent volunteer opportunities, that ties in to the first one about providing those after-school activities as well. Parents have really missed being part of options and being able to volunteer. So we're really working on bringing that back and creating more opportunities for that in a safe way. And letting them help us with these activities for other families. Look forward to that. So to summarize, we have three major goals going on. They are across their sights. So we're trying to be more responsive, including that multi-tiered system of support for mental health. We're trying to develop more opportunities for students and also for our families so they can be more connected, whether they're virtual or in-person. West side. That's our students enjoying our living wall. Very cool.
We had a program at one time where, I'm sure it went away with COVID or differently, where students all had the right books and they, I think it was different grade levels, then we were able to come in and read them and teach them.
Yes.
Doing that on a modified version.
You know, I'm glad you brought that up because that was someone that we had brought in to do a writing series to help strengthen their writing skills. And we had planned to do that every other year. But because of COVID, that hadn't, you know, happened in that off-year. But our families really did enjoy that and sharing those books.
Right, I know, and I meant a lot of those parents.
Yes.
Some kids really had this grasp of beginning.
And they were bound and they're. Yeah. We do have plans to bring that back.
Oh.
Any other questions for Tricia Spandy?
Thank you.
Very much. First reading of the policies. Okay. We have the two policies and they're accompanying a rule for first reading on the vision, might be. Roll this up a little bit. The first one, instructional materials selection was a policy that was last revised in nineteen ninety-nine. There was recently a request that was submitted to consider two of the two books over at the middle school that fit under this policy. Because of the date of this policy, when we went through, actually within the rules, it, the structure of it would no longer work because there's no longer a teachers association. And they established a committee to review the book where a teacher would be selected from the union. Or the union would select a designated teacher to that. There is no longer a teachers union to do that. So necessitated a need to update the policy and take advantage of that opportunity to do so. On the actual policy itself, there's not a lot of significant changes there. It's just including the term digital media, which did exist in ninety-nine, but it wasn't widely used like it is now. And then also include the child director of instruction involved prior to the processing of those purchases. The policy committee felt that was important because there are particular materials that the director of instruction will bring when it's like whole textbook adoptions or those really large purchases. Typically, the classroom materials is, you know, all of the teachers have a classroom budget. There's a department, heads as well, they work with them to get materials at their classroom level. And then the principal has oversight and approval of those purchases as well. And that's where I would say the bulk of our materials are. We also, we are on all the other policies, updating the national language to be in line with all the other policies. So that's the policy, the rule has more substantial changes to it, as I mentioned previously. Nothing. The policy committee is not recommending any changes to the first part of the policy, the selection of materials and everything, it's still relevant. No need to change there. The policy committee did want to end the word violence as part of the consideration on the merits of a literary value. That's not to say that the literature can't have profanity, violence or sexual content. But if it does, it should be necessitated as the merits of that literary work. And something that has to be taken into consideration. Down here, just clarifying, as we have done a lot of our other policies extending, such as our public comment, making sure we have language in there, recognizing the open enrolled student, I believe ninety-nine is when we started, it was the two thousand, right in that timeframe. So it's just extending that, that any citizen within the district community, they don't have to be a parent, they can be any citizen and or a parent of an open enrolled student. So they could live in, on the lack, be attending Options, but be part of the district and submit the complaint. But it gives the process in which they would need to deal with it, something they want to object to. This is where it's modifying or adding a little bit of language. If the current or the current policy does say that the, the principal would withdraw from circulation, whatever that item is that's being objected to. That's face the same. We're adding a layer that the principal shall be able to review that objection at the principal level and make a determination as to whether or not there should be continued use. Which means, yep, I reviewed it, I feel it's okay, they can go back into usage. And circulation, there, there's a lot of different formats, but a, a book or a digital media could be present. It could just be the teacher's collection that they use within the classroom. It could be a classroom reading set, it doesn't necessarily mean in the library. There's, the library probably contains a, I don't know, a small portion of the materials that are actually used, maybe a third or a quarter. I would say the bulk of current classroom libraries and, and under that oversight of the teachers as well. But the principal would make that determination whether to discontinue the use or put a restricted use on it, such as this material can be utilized, which you need to have parent permission or parent consent to. Or if they can change what grade level they felt it was appropriate to be used. If the individual who wrote the objection doesn't like that decision, they can appeal that decision to the district administrator in writing, specifying the reasons for the objections of the principal's decision. And then the district administrator, a library media specialist that they assign grade level or levels, and the director of instruction of the assigned grade level will review the objection, basically make the same determination as the principal, but then go it as a committee. And then take those same actions, either discontinue the use, restrict the use, continue the use. At that point, the, there is, we added the other appeal level where the district, that team's decision can be appealed to the school board as well. And that process stays pretty much the same for the most part in that that's that final level for approval and review. And again, the school board would have the same options to discontinue use, restrict the use or yeah, continue. Any questions on that?
As a member of the policy committee and board, I think we do appreciate parents that want to bring things forward that they feel is not appropriate for that level or whatever. So we do appreciate parents that do get involved. But having this laid out is a really good process so everyone understands if somebody didn't do it, exactly what that process is.
Jason, are all of the principals comfortable with being that first layer of making that decision?
Probably not. No, to a certain extent, but they see the, I think we reviewed this with, I tried to look at them today, nobody had any objections or voiced that.
Okay.
I know the, the principal where the objection was filed, you know, made a determination, but did express, I'm not comfortable removing it or discontinuing that use as an individual making that determination, that particular principle. So in, in this case, the principal made a determination to restrict the use, but didn't feel comfortable as an individual taking it completely out of use. He felt that a parent choice or parent consent would be appropriate for that. So I think we'll probably have different views or perspectives from principals on that. And they may even adjudicate it differently, they may have different personal views on it. But the reason why I think that first step is good and a valid first step is ultimately that principal signed up on the acquisition or the procurement of that item. Or it didn't get run through them in the first place. And so, for example, the two items that were objected to at the middle school were a part of a grade level reading kit that was purchased from Scholast.
Right.
So there's no way, a principal's not going to read every book, the teachers don't read every book. It's a book kit that says, here's young adult books for seventh grade, and they wanted to expand that library. So in that way, they're using a institution that should be a reliable source for these materials. But, so there, there may be things where you do, you know, you can get objected to and that gives an opportunity to then stop and review that. And the principal may decide at one, yeah, that, if I knew that was in there, I would not have purchased that or wouldn't have put that in the collection in the first place. And could pull it out. So I, I think it's a good first step, it gives them an opportunity to revisit what was purchased. Because there are, as much as you'd like to think that you review every single, you're not going to look at a parent book collection and know everything, you've got to have some trust in the sources where those are coming from. But that doesn't mean that where it's coming from, those sources would always align with the community values or desire for that material at that age line.
Right.
Yeah, but I would be, yeah, comfortable, no, I think it's fair, hard decisions. And they don't want to be, yeah.
Right.
Either way.
But there's, I mean, I like that you laid out additional, so if the decision is not something that a person liked, then there's other ways. there's other ways to continue the discussion and.
Yeah. Any other questions on that? The non-discrimination policy is really simple, it's just, and you know, we discussed, it's a new policy, but it's related to the top line, we discussed it when it was created, federal law requires this from this the specific individual, in this case it was human resources. And we had a change in that position, so you just need to pay both of these next two policies to include Taylor. At least we waited until after she was married so we didn't come back. Updated. All right, that's all I have for the first read. All right, stand again. Recommendations to the district minister. All right, first off are the personnel recommendations. We've got the personnel sheet there in front of you. Are there any questions on any of the resignations or appointments that I can answer?
I would just like to say that I wish to, to, the ones we got, whoever's working on others, of resignation from, I wish them good luck in the future, that was very nice of them, yeah, supplying that information.
As I was meeting Cook and Cassandra, where, and you know, I'd like to extend thanks to everybody for their service and welcome those on board, they're joining.
Lot of work and energy put into a lot of these positions.
Other questions?
I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for November 8th, 2021, including new employment contracts condition on passing the background check and district mandated drug screen.
Sir, a second. So move the second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for November 8th, 2021, including employment contract condition upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screen.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell? Mrs. Ray?
Yep.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yep.
Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
School gifts?
We have a number of school gifts to present this evening. The Walworth County Food and Diaper Bank has donated 2,000 Mercury Mountain Air, sorry, they donated a 2,000 Mercury Mountain Air to the auto department and the high school valued at $1,600. The Calvary Community Church has donated $500 for lunch in a backpack. The Elkhorn Chamber has donated $500 towards the purchase of a laser engraved glass to the tech end department at the middle school. I should cover the middle school for Oktoberfest engraved the glasses and they made the donation to cover, like, the machine has filters and so forth to just get back to, towards that. They did 500 glasses, which turned out great.
Yeah, they could have sold more right now.
The Nicholas Surgi Foundation donated $1,500 for the purchase of lumber to enhance the nature trail between high school and middle school. Fleet Farm in Delgan has donated six cases of water to the high school, valued at $25. And Barbara Remington has donated the following Sanjamar items to the high school valued at $10,599. Forty-eight oven men, seventy-two aprons, nine cutting boards, six boxes of Speed Rex, 120 VersaMast, three boxes of cutting board expansion kits, 10 boxes of cutting boards, 32 boxes of dome staffers, 24 lettuce quarters, two boxes of hand grabbers, 24 turners, one box of digital scales, 10 boxes of shelf liners, one box of scoop and guardian systems, and one piece of wrap and three boxes of cup dispensers.
And two total those.
That may help stock our food classes.
Yeah, that's awesome.
All right, I'd like it for a motion to approve our generous.
I move to approve the generous school gifts.
Sir, a second?
Second.
So they move a second to approve the gifts to Walworth County Food and Diaper Bank, Calvary Community Church, the Elkhorn Chamber, Nicholas Surgi Foundation, Fleet Farm, and Barbara Remington as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
Announcements.
All right, Senator Johnson will be visiting us tomorrow at the high school. I believe the AP government classes are, have been invited to meet with them for 45 minutes or so and talk about government. We also have the school board election coming up, the incumbents scheduled for election this year, Ed Scarrow and Kevin Gayheart. It's always a good idea to publicly declare if you will run for reelection. Not saying that you need to do that now, but that's recommended by WASG. The Elkhorn residents interested in running for school board should contact Jordy Estman in the district office for a packet of materials that are needed for submission to candidacy. That's all I have for general announcements, other than COVID overall, the high school has settled down. We did implement a few weeks ago because we found a number of cases where kids were sick and out for a couple of days and coming back to school and then later discovering that they were sick with COVID. So that has been going well. Our numbers overall are probably, if you look at our dashboard, higher than some of the other area schools. However, we're doing much more testing than any of the other area schools. So you expect that ratio to be a little higher as well. We do have, we've had a couple outbreaks at Jackson, Jackson numbers are up. Right now, I believe today, when I looked, there are around 18 positive cases from Jackson. Overall, this morning, when I looked, we're just over 150 individuals on the watch list, which is down from, we did get 400 in the high school, was at its peak with over 200 in the high school itself. But those numbers are that down overall, but it is definitely, we see a shift in where the strain is on the staffing and so forth, based on where some of the families are being impacted.
We still have quite a few people testing here in the district.
Testing is, yes, we're booked and I talked to Mary about coming up with some plans to expand that as well, because I don't like people, we're not having to wait a significant amount of time, but we can't get people in all the time on the same day. So oftentimes it'll be the next day.
With having the two days, though, if they're absent.
Yeah, so that's increased the number of people testing that, yeah, we didn't have that in place and that would rather be fine on that, but we're still catching a lot of people with COVID in that aspect and keeping them out from exposing others. So in our discussion today, Bill, we'd like to continue that the Thanksgiving break and then the evaluator. We made, our numbers are down and we're at a more controlled level, then we may take that back off as a mitigation strategy after Thanksgiving. We'll see how we're doing at that point.
But last Thursday at eight o'clock in the morning, there were two appointments available for the whole day.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I notice some school district is taking extra time at Thanksgiving and they're doing it virtually. They're just shutting down in person. I don't remember what school district that was, but they've already scheduled it.
They've already scheduled it. We did last year because we were very on COVID numbers at that time, yeah. Yes. So I, I think that is something that, looking at from a, just from a staffing balancing and restrain the workload that they're under because of how many classes they're covering and that extra stress load, it's definitely something that we may want to look at doing similar to what we did last year and building some of those extra days we have. For elementary staff, we have approximately enough minutes where we have 12 additional, 12 more instructional days than we are required to have at the elementary level. A high school and a middle school, which requires the most minutes, still has five days, five extra days, both in schedule. So those are days that we could strategically use to give some relief on that aspect. Moving forward and, yeah, it's it, it's hard, it's a strain on them and it's to be frank, I think, a little exhausting because it was a little unanticipated. I think people were feeling really positive going into the year with the vaccinations being out available that, you know, we wouldn't see this ongoing. That'll, yeah. That's all I have.
You looking for Washington here?
Who was the second? Mark? Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart, yes. Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell? Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
And Stoltz?
Yeah.